Okay, roll call Jared.
Mr. Adams?
Chris, are you there?
I think you said goodbye to everyone after the executive session.
Julius Markey-Cucro? Mr. Harlan?
Yeah.
Dr. McComby?
Here.
Dr. Rig?
Here.
Dr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Steve?
Here.
Mr. Schroed?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our meeting this evening. I do not have a board president message and I don't think anybody signed up for public comment. And there's nobody here from IAEA, ASPI, SGA, or STUKA. So we're down to the superintendent's report.
Thank you sir, thank you sir. First, I wanted to invite everyone to attend the scholars forum at the KCAC from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. on April 10th. I think I sent you an email about it, but if not, I'll send you another one. This is a really, really cool event where our students take part in research projects. And a lot of these kids do this as a club. So these are some really interesting kids who just do this research because it's interesting to them. And they wanna, and these are the kids that are gonna run the world someday. So they go and present side by side with IUP students who do research projects as well. I didn't even know we did this last year until I stumbled upon, got invited, I was like, sure, I'll show up. And then when I got to talk to some of the, you know, some of the students that were there, it was just outstanding, amazing what they do. So if you can spare some time between 1:00 p.m., or I'm sorry, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on April 10th, please do so, it'll be worth your while, you'll be blown away by what those, what those students can do. And special thanks to the science teachers at the senior high for what they do, they go above and beyond to help those kids with these projects too. So it's a, it's a team effort and one that should be applauded. Speaking of science, wanted to give everyone an update on our solar eclipse plan. This has become a hot topic in the news recently with the, on April 8th, there will be an almost full solar eclipse visible here from Pennsylvania. The last time that eclipse of this magnitude took place was in the 1920s, the next time it will happen will be 2079. So this is probably our last chance to see one, right? So, so it's important. A lot of school districts are dismissing early out of safety concerns. We are gonna follow suit with our secondary students and here's why. The timing of the eclipse happens, the most dangerous time for the eclipse is about 45 minutes before the full eclipse and 45 minutes following the full eclipse. The reason it's dangerous is because your eye doesn't react normally to the sunlight because the moon is blocking a lot of the rays that normally you would see. And so your eyes don't water enough to turn away. So your eyes are kinda tricked into being able to tolerate it and you think you can look at the sun a little bit longer and it's a really cool event, so you tend to stare. But your eyes are still receiving the same amount of UV rays and it causes permanent irreversible eye damage. In 2017, the last time an eclipse like this happened in the southern United States, there were over 270 reports of people with crescent shaped burns in their eyes that can never be repaired. So there is a danger here. We feel dismissing the senior high students early so they can get home and they won't be in transit during the dangerous time of the eclipse is important. We're gonna send some, some safety information, we're gonna warn the students several times, we're gonna warn the parents several times. And we're gonna make sure that everyone understands that as interesting and as fascinating as this event can be, it can be equally as dangerous. So our students, we don't want them to be in the bus and just out of curiosity stare at the, the event happening and hurt themselves. Nor do we want them to be driving home and then, you know, be distracted by this strange event because it's gonna be weirdly dark at that time, it almost turns to night there for a brief moment. So it's gonna be something they've never experienced before and something they probably never experience again and it's, it could cause accidents and other things. So getting this, the high school students and junior high students home is important. We're also gonna cancel or postpone all outside athletic activities between the hours of 2:00 p.m. and 4:30 p.m. on that day. Same reason, right? We're curious beings. If we're outside and we're warming up for a baseball game, we may have a tendency to look up and stare at the sun too long and hurt ourselves. So Mr. Rowan has worked very hard to either, to move the things around, either delay them till after 4:30 or to, to move them entirely. Elementary wise though, we feel it's inherently dangerous to send the kids home early. And here's why. We don't know whatever each student is going home to. We don't know what the situation is at home. Hopefully mom and dad or someone is there to take care of them and knows enough to not have them look at the sun. But if we were early dismiss the elementary students, that means that someone have to take off work and go home or they leave them with a babysitter or, you know, someone that might not know enough to keep them safe. So we believe that it's, it's more safe to keep them in school during that time. So we're gonna keep them in school during that time and we're gonna take advantage of this incredible science lesson that, you know, the powers that be are giving us. And we're gonna actually participate, we're gonna have safety glasses for every kid that the board approved a meeting ago. And we're gonna have masks so they can't peer over the, the glasses, so it's gonna be as safe as possible. We're also gonna try to pull some of the help from the secondary schools down to the, to the elementaries to help with crowd control and make sure those masks are in place and that their students are as safe as possible. Obviously, we're gonna give the parents the opportunity to opt their children out of this. If they feel it's too dangerous and, you know, they're, they're afraid, we can actually opt, absolutely opt them out and keep them in an assembly and they can watch the live stream event that NASA is supposed to be putting on in the auditorium. So that's the plan, we're working out the details. We're gonna send some information to the teachers tomorrow and the parents probably the day after to make sure that all the details are worked out. We have a couple of things we have to work out with the buses to make sure that we're ready to go. But that's the plan, I just wanted everyone to know because it's a hot topic, all the other districts are, are involved and I wanted everyone to know what our plan was gonna be. In other news, I wanted to congratulate the senior high boys swim and diving team for being the first team ever in Indiana history to win a PIA double A state championship. With all due respect to the rugby team who won a couple of years ago, won the state championship, although that was not a PIA double A championship. So they, it's, it's a big deal, it's a, it's the first time that we've ever had a PIA double A champion. They are gonna be recognized by both the House and Senate on May 8th. So we're going to transport the students down there with the coaches and they're gonna be invited to the floor of Congress to be recognized by both bodies, which is a really special event.
Congress or the general assembly?
I'm sorry?
Congress or the general?
General assembly, yeah, general assembly. So we're going to bring them down there and they're gonna be recognized by those ladies and gentlemen. We're also gonna come back to you with plans for appropriate trophy case and other things. And there's, they're holding a planning pep rally after Easter to celebrate the, the students' achievements because it's significant and we should, we should be proud of the accomplishment that they, they.
I think you should tell them that they're getting out of school early on April 8th because of that.
We could, yes sir, that's a good idea. I also wanted to bring to your attention that Thursday, this past Thursday night was a busy one in the Indiana area school district. We had an APTT night, which are parent nights, at both Ben Franklin and East Pike. And both were really, really well attended. I popped into both, I could only spend a few minutes because I literally had to be in every building because something was going on in just about every building in our district. They were just outstanding, what the teachers did to bring the parents in, to get them engaged in the learning. Here at East Pike, they had a spaghetti dinner that was served by some of our students. The rugby team once again stepped up and came and, and helped, helped serve that dinner. So thank you to those gentlemen and help there. At East Pike, or at Ben Franklin, they had the Olympics where the, the kids actually made little golf, mini golf courses that the kids, the parents could play, that they designed by themselves. And then there was therapy dogs there that you could, you know, the kids could come pet and they had different events in each classroom. Meanwhile, across down at junior high, there was a dance that was a huge success. And then at the senior high, we had mini thon. And I'm always blown away by that event, that is really one of the coolest things we do as a community. Like the, the place is packed with students, it's almost like, it's, it's gotta be, I don't know exactly how many students, Mr. McConney, do you know how many actually attended?
Say close to 400.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it was a lot of students. And they raised over $45,000 for the Four Diamonds Club, which is just amazing that these are, this is all student led, all student run. I mean, I do, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mrs. Duffy and her team because she, you know, she does a great job with that leadership group and keeping them on track. But she just kinda facilitates while they do a lot of the work. And so it's a lot of work for all the teachers involved, but the kids especially go out and do a lot of this, this legwork and raise significant amount of money for the Four Diamonds Club at Penn State. So kudos to all the students involved, the staff, the faculty, a lot of faculty members that were there volunteering their time to, to help with the event. And it's a really, really well attended and very, very nice event. And I also say like, it's so inclusive as well, like everybody's welcome. Like there's no, it, it's just really, everyone's smiling, there's nobody angry or upset, it's just a really nice environment.
It was great to see the kids really tone in on the guest speakers, those that survived cancer. I mean, I thought I stopped down there for a little while and it was really neat.
Yeah, I mean, it really is, it's a powerful one and it's such a cool thing. And it's so unique here, I've been in a lot of districts and I've never seen anything to that magnitude anywhere. It's, it's really nice. So I wanted to say, special thanks to Mr. Dave Reed and the team at First Commonwealth who made two generous EITC donations to our different projects recently. We got $2,000 from First Commonwealth for our Combat Bots program at the junior high, which is another very, very cool thing that we do here. It's probably the best STEM program in western Pennsylvania at that level. I don't know anybody at the middle school level that does something that's so involved and requires students to think on such a high level as that Combat Bots. If you have time on May 17th, that's the Combat Bots event, I'll send you an invite for sure. But that's something you shouldn't miss, it's really, really, really interesting. And then they also donated $15,000 to our dual enrollment program, which is just outstanding. And there's, you know, 50 students at the senior high this year who are taking credits at IUP and dozens more who are taking college and high school credits through WCCC or Mount Alawishus. So that money goes to help offset some of that tuition, which is like getting a, it's like giving our students a head start on life and that, that wouldn't be possible without donors like First Commonwealth. So thank you to them and to all those businesses that give through the EITC program. If you don't know what that is, EITC is a way that businesses or individuals can give to public schools or, or any number of entities that are EITC approved and, and get a tax deduction from that. Instead of getting a tax deduction, actually it's almost, it's a dollar for dollar reward.
Tax credit.
Tax credit. So that, it's a great way to make sure that the tax money that you're gonna spend goes where you want it. So if it's, if you wanna go on the PD's website, you can look that up or if you just Google EITC Pennsylvania, you'll find more information on that. If you wanna talk to anybody about how you can give, please don't hesitate to give me a call. A little bit of sad news and, but nice news, I have a thank you card here from Forest Hills. Mrs. Templeton and Mrs. Eisenman and Dr. Minnick at the junior high took up a donation among our staff for the Forest Hill staff because I don't know if you paid attention to the news, but they recently lost a student to suicide, which is a traumatic event for anybody. But our former colleague, Mr. Edmondson, is now principal there, so he was, you know, very directly involved in it. Mrs. Templeton, having gone through something similar in Kenyatta, had a soft spot for that and, you know, worked with the other principals to arrange this. And they sent us a very nice card that I'm gonna send around to you that you can look at because it meant a lot to the, the staff that somebody else reached out and just said, hey, you know what you're going through. Just give them some, a nice basket of, you know, just small gifts and goodies and things with a little card that just says hang in there, you know, we know it's tough, so, but they were very appreciative. And then finally, I had a recognition that I was asked not to give and do publicly, but I ignored that advice and decided to do it publicly. But, he's already mad, he's already turned. But, this is a big deal, this is a big deal. So this is from the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials in recognition of both Wes Matthews, who is our, our database management professional and Mr. Jared Cronauer for earning the PA Certified School Business Administrator for four more years. These certifications demonstrate dedication to professional growth and commitment to excellence in school business operations and require adherence to rigid professional ethical and professional standards established by this program. So they, we applaud you for your continued encouragement, prioritization, professional development. And commitment to the profession, so. Look at that, Jared. It's gonna be a horrible picture, Jim.
It's okay, we can do one after, Pat.
No, no, it, it won't make much difference.
Take up a collection or get a frame for that for you?
I have the old frame. But it is something that's, you know, he doesn't have, he goes public, he does a nice job. So I thank him for everything he does and congratulate him. And that, with that, sir, that's all I have.
Well, two things on my end, congratulations, your job well done. We're glad to have you here in, in Indiana with us. And the second thing, Rob, I'm sure that you're planning as far as the swim team recognition, bringing them to a board meeting at some point so that we can thank them and congratulate them for their job well done as, as well?
Correct, that'll be one of the board meetings in April.
One of the board meetings in April, okay, very good. Okay, we did not have a solicitor, thank you for your presentation. We did not have a solicitor's report, no presentation this evening. It's time to approve the minutes and the agenda.
I move we approve 313 to us, written.
Second.
Moved in second, questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motions carry. Okay, there is no ICTC report today. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, so it'll be an update at the next board meeting. Sue?
Yes, we met on Tuesday, March 19th. Prior to our meeting, we had a presentation by the MCT Certified Public Accountants and our audit was clean, excellent report for Aaron. We approved the audit, the list of payments, deposits, treasures, report, and budget summary. We accepted resignations of one paraprofessional and one 21st century after-school staff member. We hired two paraprofessionals, one school psychologist, one speech-language pathologist, and one lead staff and two hourly staff for our 21st century programs. We accepted with regret resignations of one member of the training and consultation team, one early intervention teacher, and two pairs. Approved a leave of absence for a speech-language clinician. Approved one part-time intern and a volunteer class assistant. Accepted usual several agreements, MOAs and contracts, approved several new policies. And then Dr. Mattson reminded the board, to remind our boards, that the next meeting on April 16th is the convention at IASD. And she encourages everyone to come.
Very good, very good. Go ahead, no, no, keep going, keep rolling. Okay, all right, Jim, outreach, what's going on there?
Outreach, we had a meeting on March 18th where the majority of that meeting was spent discussing Horseman planned open house for April 2nd to bring in interested parties or anybody who wants to see the building, continuing to explore future use of that property, whether it be educational or otherwise.
And if I could comment on that, sir, I think that's an important thing for them to know, you know, the community to know as well. You know, we're gonna have this open house in partnership with Strategy Solutions that we can entertain all opportunities, whether it's an academic, an academic partner who wants to come in and, and borrow the space, whether it's someone who wants to come and look at potentially developing the space, whether it's a rent or possible purchase. April 2nd, we're gonna open the building and have experts there to be able to ask questions and tour the building itself and get a good look at it. And so I hope everyone can attend.
Very good. Okay, Quintina, what's going on over at the library?
I attended orientation last Monday to look at the different departments and divisions and got a lot of fun paperwork about being on the library board.
Very good, thank you.
I attended the board meeting last Wednesday as well. And so they officially hired the newest acting director, she starts this week, her name is Lauren. So I will get around to inviting her for the board's request to introduce herself. And there's, there's still board vacancies, so whoever wants to serve on the board, the library is welcoming you with open arms. And also I have a note here that the library really wants to build a better partnership with the school district. I guess they feel as though the partnership pieces lack.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We'll see if we can work on that.
Yes.
Sally, what's going on at BSBA this week?
I didn't come across anything noteworthy, so I have no report.
Okay, very good. Okay, back to you Sue for academic and extracurricular.
Yeah, our meeting is next week, so I don't have a committee report, but we do have some agenda items for vote. First one is 5.2, a student disciplinary agreement. Based on the recommendation of administration, the board approves student disciplinary agreement for student number 2324-8 as presented.
Moved in second, there's no real discussion on that, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
And if everyone's okay with me taking 5.3 and 5.4 together. First one is an affiliation agreement with the Ohio University for our N to BSN program as presented. The second one is the ACRP Extended School Year Agreement between IASD and the Alternative Community Resource Program as presented.
Second.
Moved in second on 5.3 and 5.4, questions, comments, or discussion? Bob, anything you'd like to add to those?
No, Ohio is a well-respected accredited university and they, Mrs. Pacora, my nurse Pacora has agreed to take this student on, so appreciate that.
Very good. Anybody else? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motions carry.
5.5, we have two field trip requests. The first one is for 16 senior high life skills students and nine adults to Camp Allegheny in Stowystown, Pennsylvania for an overnight trip from May 23rd to May 24th, 2024, at a cost to the district of $2,954 for substitute teachers and overtime for the pairs attending the trip. And the second is an educational trip for our 120 seniors and seven adults to Cedar Point, Sandusky, Ohio on May 31st, 2024, at a cost to the district of $954 for substitute teachers.
Second.
Moved in second on 5.5, questions, comments, or discussion on that?
Just my apologies to Dr. Rig and the committee because this, these came to us after their, the committee meeting, so we didn't get a chance to discuss them in committee, but they are timely. So I had to bring them to the board here tonight to get them moving. I will say that Mrs. Dadsen's program is, is really worthwhile. Those students are engaged in all kinds of learning activities on that trip. And through the, the Commons Cafe, they raised the lion's share of the funds necessary to run this program. So it definitely has supported the administration and the senior trip obviously, you know, we also support that.
They've actually raised all the money for camping.
Correct, they paid for transportation, the rental of the place, all of that. All we have to do is pay for the subs and the overtime.
So by selling coffee at the coffee bar and engaging with the students, we've managed to self-fund this. We've been, we're, we're being asked to fund salaries.
Right, yes sir.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
And the last one is 5.6, a memorandum of agreement based on the recommendation of administration. The board approves the MOA with IAEA regarding college and high school as presented.
Second.
Moved in second on the MOA, anything?
Yeah, this was just something that Paul and I missed at the beginning of the year that we're rectifying. So it's approved, all, all the changes. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on the part of the board? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Jim, policy and personnel.
All right, our next meeting is April 8th. We do not, did not have one since our last meeting, so no committee report. We'll just take all of these as consent unless anybody has an issue with that. 6.2 is a substitute list as presented. 6.3 is based on the recommendation of administration, the board employs Cora Morgan as long-term fourth grade substitute teacher effective April 4th, 2024, continuing to last teacher day of 2324 school year at a per diem rate of $250.41. Instructional one, step one be approved pending receipt of all required paperwork. And based on the recommendation of the administration, the board employs Emma Rice as a long-term fourth grade substitute teacher effective April 3rd, 24, continuing to last teacher day of 2324 school year, per diem rate of $250.41. Instructional one, step one be approved pending receipt of all required paperwork. And 6.4 is employment of parent educators based on the recommendation of administration, excuse me, Luke Means and Ashley Hook be employed as parent educators effective March 26th, 23. Shouldn't that be 24?
Read it as such?
As 24. At an hourly rate of $13.25 per hour, subject to 60-day probation period, be approved pending receipt of all necessary paperwork.
Second.
Okay, moved in second on 6.2, 3, and 4, questions, comments, or discussion on those? Bob, anything you wanna add on those?
No, I think they were excited about adding these people to our team.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motions carry. Okay, Tom, looks like Buildings and Grounds is up next.
They have a meeting, which I did not attend, so Jared's gonna give us the update.
Items on the agenda for last Monday where we had an update on Eisenhower. Our clerk of the works gave his update. We also discussed five change orders, four of which are on the agenda for tonight. The Buildings and Grounds Committee had their discussion on the repurposing of Horseman. We also had a presentation from Trumco Roofing about a possibility of repurposing or resurfacing of the junior high roof, which at this point is over its warranty. So we are continuing to look at that option. Also submitting for grant funding for possibly doing that as well, which there is a motion on the agenda tonight to approve that, approve the administration to submit for that grant. We talked about the stadium pool replacement and lighting at the high school. I think the only other, I know two items we talked about that evening where Mr. O'Neill is coming back with more information for the board on how to expand self-service at the high school and junior high when you're in the buildings. And then we did a review of the capital projects list as well.
Okay.
Thank you. So we have a couple, we have several motions here. Would you, I'll make the first, I'll make the motions, 7.3, Eisenhower change orders 1, 2, 3, and 4 we approved and submitted.
Second.
And if you could explain, Jared, what those are?
Yep, the first one, they, almost 9,000. In all the classrooms where we are placing lockers underneath the windows, there was places where there was thought to be a kind of cement foundation. There isn't any, so they need to frame it up so that all the lockers under the windows are.
There's a cement foundation under the old, under the old human ventilator, not just, not to the right or left of that.
Yes.
So they've tried to level this out a little bit.
Yep. Number two is just for some over excavation that needed to take place in Area D, which is the south end of the building where the classroom additions are taking place. Number three is some over excavation in Area C, which is, I'm trying to think which part of similar.
Administration area.
Yes, administration area. And then K&amp;K Plumbing is to put some shut-off valves throughout the building so that if our maintenance guys are ever having to do work in the building, they don't have to shut all the water off to the entire building, they can shut it off to certain areas, so.
They have not started excavation at the far west edge yet?
I've not been over there, I believe that was supposed to have started.
I drove, I drove by Saturday morning, Tom, and I did not see anything as far as the new multipurpose gymnasium room.
Yeah, I just, I bring that up because that's, that's the next place we're gonna be vulnerable, it's overexcavation situation.
Yeah.
Jared, do we have a total of all the change orders so far? If you don't get it, if you can just email it.
Yep, I can, I'll send it out to everybody.
Maybe the last.
It was last, but it wasn't.
Yeah.
It had all of, it didn't have the extra ones.
It's attached to the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Okay, and these were included in it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and there was one that was opposed that.
Yeah, that large one was on there and we didn't start rid of it.
Okay. So any other questions, comments, or discussion on these change orders?
I don't know much about construction, but is number two, is that, these alone, it's just.
It's just a steep number. Is that?
They had to dig down to get to firm soil to lay the foundation, and that was not planned for, so they, that's what the overexcavation means. They had to keep digging until it tested solid enough to put a foundation. So, we don't get a choice in that one. They can't do it unless they get there.
And then they put gravel back in at the eight-inch lifts and tamped it back in and bring it, to bring it back up to, to very low.
Okay.
So, it's not just digging dirt, it's.
Yeah, if they, if they didn't, the building would sink.
We don't want that.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or discussion on the change orders?
Did we have a second on that? That we seconded before you reviewed it?
Yes. Yeah, I think Jim's second. Okay, nothing heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Motion 7.4, facility grants to the P, facility grants to the Department of Community and Economic Development as presented.
Second. Okay, Jared, you wanna kind of go over those real quick?
These are some new grant opportunity, or a new grant opportunity through the Department of Community and Economic Development for school facility upgrades. This is the grant opportunity that we're trying to apply for to resurface the junior high roof and extend its life for up to, could be another 20 years or 30 years. So, the grant is due by the end of May. We've already started it. We're working with Tremco to get all the necessary quotes and everything and hopefully have that submitted. We probably won't hear anything until September is the, is what we're hearing now. So, it'll be a couple of months.
And then the second one?
Is just if we're allowed to submit two grants through here, that would be the second opportunity that the Buildings and Grounds discussed last Monday was the controls, environmental controls here at East Pike would also be an opportunity to get some money to upgrade that.
We've been looking at the controls here for a number of years. They're, the controls here are ancient or non-existent. So, so all the, all the building-wide mechanical controls are not, it's just building is a control. Working off the notice that. I would like to point out that this is, these funds were grossly oversubscribed to and unlikely that we would get awarded. But we can make the application and maybe we'll get lucky.
And even if we only get part of it, then we figure out what to do with it then, Tom.
And it just, I don't want the legislature to think that the, that the whole reset that they appropriated for the entire state is gonna cover these kind of problems. And every district is going after stuff that they haven't been able to afford. And we haven't had plan con for 15 years.
Okay. Further comments, questions, or discussion on 7.4? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Julian, audit and finance.
Thank you. We did have a meeting tonight, and we have a motion tonight relative to the first item on our agenda tonight. We're recommending that we approve the Aaron general fund package. Sue Lee, who's our liaison, had no objections and she said, thank you, as you mentioned before, they have a sound audit and our contribution won't go up too much. Seems to be a good budget. We talked about the library funding request for some additional monies and we sent some questions back with Jared, so we're waiting to hear on that. Jared gave us our S, S R funded items, which totals $652,000. And if we wanna keep those projects when the money runs out this year, then we have to figure out how to pay for them. We talked about repurposing of Horseman and the open house on April 2nd, and you've already covered that, so. Junior roof restoration discretion, the DCED grant, we've already passed that. We also looked at the newly revamped capital reserve list, looking for some guidelines with those, number ones, numbers twos, and number threes. It's a nice list. And then finally, we started to look at the athletic budget. So, tonight, I would like to move number 8.2, the Aaron operating budget. For the board's information, a copy of the proposed budget was provided to them. The district share of the budget is estimated $159,551. This represents no increase over the district share for the 2324 school year. Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board of the IASD School District and member of the Aaron Idi immediate unit 28 approves the general operating budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $3,664,707.
Second. Moved in second on the Aaron budget. Questions, comments, or further discussion on that? Sue, anything you wanna add to that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Down to the closing, there are no discussions.
Can I add a quick discussion I have? I would just like to bring everyone's attention that the boys rugby team has started their season 2-0 with two huge wins, 38-5 against Penn Hills and 47-7 over North Pitt. Their next game's away at Moon on April 7th.
Are you saying they're gonna be a dominant player in the conference this year?
As they seem to always be.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Okay, is there any public comment on agenda items? Nothing seen or heard. We had some enclosures, our treasures report. We are going to change our meeting date for May the 13th to May the 20th at 7:00 PM. And the reason for this is that May the 13th is the education awards.
Excellence.
Excellence in education for the teacher and the student of the year. And so, we thought it would be best if we could all attend that function rather than our board meeting, so we moved the board meeting to May the 20th.
Policy and Personnel will be canceled also for that night?
What's that? Yes.
Policy and Personnel canceled us.
Yep. Thanks, Sue. The next regular board meeting will be April the 8th at 7:00 PM to discuss general purposes. I know it's already been mentioned three times, but I wanna mention the time for the open house on April the 2nd is from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, and all are welcome. Our next committee meetings are extracurricular and academic on April the 1st and policy and personnel on April the 8th, both at 5:30. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
You moved the meeting on top of the Buildings and Grounds Committee?
We did.
So, we're gonna have that for an hour?
We're gonna, yeah, policy and personnel will keep short. We'll add that in there as well, and then we'll do that in half an hour, then your building, you'll have half an hour then.
Okay. I want to do the gentleman.
Okay, more details. Point is, Tom, more details on the committee to come. Okay? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Quintina.
Hey, Sue, you have any strip tickets to meet?